Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for September 25th, 2018. Approved the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Motion by Mary, second by Steve to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, invocations, Vineyard United Methodist Church. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm new here, so if I'm doing something wrong, just let me know.
Well, we had your wife last time, correct?
Yeah. She told me a funny story, but I'll say that for another time. But I'm sure you guys already have the contents of it for the most part. The joy of being new, right?
Yes.
Can I open us with a word of prayer?
Yes.
Creator God, as we take a moment to pause and turn our hearts and minds towards you, I'd like to offer up a word of thanksgiving. Thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for this day. Thank you for providing for us. Thank you for the people here, and thank you for the city leaders before me. I pray for your hand of blessing to be on all of us and especially for these leaders as they go about the meeting and the business of today. I pray that your wisdom and your discernment would be upon all of them, that they may do the work of the people here in Hutchinson to bless them and to benefit them, to know how to use the resources of this city well, so that Hutchinson can be a wonderful and thriving community. I pray for the city. I pray for its welfare. I pray that you would bless it. Give it safety. Give it peace. And Creator God, I pray that in a time where joy itself can be hard to find, I pray for that. I pray for joy in this city, for happiness, and for the well-being of the people here. Give us wisdom and discernment to know how to do that. Help us to be bright, shining lights. Teach us to be uncompromisingly good. We pray this in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Mary, how about a shout-out to Historic Cut for the tour?
Well, I can certainly do that. To all of those people that attended the cemetery tour this past Sunday, thank you. The donations were up, the crowd was great, the weather was nice, and I think our people who portrayed our actors did a great job. So, thank you to all those who helped us set up, tear down, be the actors, and to all those that came out and had a beautiful Sunday afternoon. And you know, I even heard a few people who showed up like on the second or third tour and went, "We're here because the Vikings are losing." So, thanks to them also.
We have Resolution Number 14948, Resolution accepting donations from Hutch Health Hospital Auxiliary. That's $1,000 to the Hutchinson Fire Department.
Yep. Mayor and council, we did receive a generous gift from the auxiliary to help with the replacement of laundering equipment at the fire department.
To accept, with thanks.
Motion by Steve, second by John to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, citizens addressing the city council. Anybody want to address the council tonight? Alrighty, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of September 11th, 2018, and the special workshop of September 11th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve both of them.
House, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, consent agenda. Be done with one motion unless somebody wants to pull something off for discussion. A is approval of lease agreement with RD Machine for Hutchinson Enterprise Center. B is approval of out-of-state travel for Police Chief Dan Hatton to attend the International Chiefs of Police Association Training Conference in Orlando, Florida from October 5th through the 10th, 2018. Resolution Number 14952, Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit and site plan for a drugstore in a C4 zoning district located at 1460 Montreal Street Southeast with favorable planning commission recommendation. D is approval of short-term gambling license for a school district number 423 Foundation. E is improvement projects, change order, and supplemental agreements. Under there, we have change order number one, letting number four, project number 18-04. That's the 2018 pavement management program. Two is change order number one for letting number 10, project number 18-10, trail and park, parking improvements. Three is change order number one, letting number 13, project number 18-13. That's the 2018 lift station improvements. And F is claims and appropriation and contract payments. Anything, anybody wants pulled off?
Make a, make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Steve to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We don't have a public hearing, nothing under communications, requests, and petitions. No unfinished business under new business. We have amending Bobbin Barber Brewing Company's taproom license to include liquor consumption in outside seating area.
Mayor and council, in front of you tonight is a, for consideration, is a request from Bobbin Barber's Brewing Company. They'd like to allow consumption of alcohol outside of the actual building. They're looking at a picnic area right in front. I know they have it designated within the documents. I would say it's something similar to what's, what we have approved for Sonora's when they asked for that to be out on to the sidewalk. I guess the one difference, this isn't on a public right-of-way. But since that was not included in the original license, it is something for the council to consider tonight in front of you.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by John to approve. Any other discussion on it?
Just had one question about, you know, there's no designated really area for it. Is that something, you know, driving by, you see the picnic tables, and I think it's great, and it only makes sense, but if that's really the area, should there be some delineation somehow? Think of the food truck being right around the corner. I mean, you'd think it'd be natural to walk over there. There's parking spots though in between, and so I guess I just, that was the one question that came up. Should it be marked somehow? Need or see how it works?
I'm comfortable with not being marked.
Yeah, I am too. I, I talked, Dan actually approached me about it, and you know, I just thought, you know, he's got, like he says, there's potential for glassware to disappear when people walk outside, so I'm sure he's gonna be keeping a pretty close eye on it. So, I'm comfortable with it just being, I'm sure he's gonna monitor it well.
Could that be something that's changed later on if it becomes an issue?
You know, Mark and I didn't have an opportunity to talk about it, but I'm assuming they're gonna have to apply for a new license every year, you know, obviously. So, I would say if we run into a concern, that would probably be the most appropriate time. Got any opinions on that?
No, I would agree, I would agree with that. Certainly, you know, as I take a look at it, they're saying that they're enlarging their serving area to this area that's designated in yellow right now. If through their request or through the public's observation or police observation if they're finding that alcohol is being served outside of that area, you know, that would be a violation of their license. And on the other hand, if they wanted to expand that area, they'd have to come before you again anyway, so.
Sure. Makes it sound like it's just an area where people can take their drinks out.
Sit outside on picnic tables.
Yeah, they would not be serving outside there. I guess in my experience, you know, sometimes when the food truck is parked on the street in front of a taproom, you know, then the, the business is really concerned about making sure that people don't take their beer or whatever outside, and usually that's marked on the door, so.
Right. I certainly can see that in a, you know, this is what Mr. Hart has designated to be his expanded area, and it's gonna be up to him to make sure that that area is complied with, so.
I also believe when we had the discussion about the taproom, he had talked about maybe having some music outside at some point during the summer too, so it fits with that.
But for now, there's only, what, two tables gonna be out there?
That's what's out there, I believe, right now. That's what he's indicated. I mean, the area is larger than just where that, those two, those two picnic tables. And I would say that's the risk when you don't have some sort of physical barrier, if you wanna say. It is somewhat unique for us. You know, most of the other establishments are adjacent to a public right-of-way, so they're, they have a natural border, if you wanna say. This place doesn't, so I would say it's definitely something we'll have to keep an eye on.
Right.
You know, we, we did expand it for the Arts in the Park, and I don't know, what's it been, a couple of years now, and I don't think we've had any.
Problems.
Any problems down there that I've heard of. Mark, have you?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any either.
I did spill a beer once.
Oh, you would.
Alcohol abuse, yeah. Any other discussion on it? Call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, agreement for environmental permitting legal services. Mr. John?
Yeah, I'll kick it off quickly and then hand it over to John for the specifics. What's affording this evening, we touched on this a little bit earlier at the workshop meeting with the coalition, and the staff has been working quite a bit with the MPCA with respect to our NPDS wastewater discharge permit, basically our wastewater effluent permit and the renewal of that. We're starting to get a little better understanding what the expectations are going to be, or at least in the PCA's mind of the city with our new permit. And at this point, we really feel it's in the city's best interest to, I guess, utilize the services of a legal consultant, Flaherty and Hood, who obviously has, has ties to the coalition and to, to Messer, that was referenced earlier, that John's involved with quite a bit, and basically prepare ourselves to respond to the PCA's initial communication on this front as best we can. And with that, I'll hand it off to John.
Thank you, Kent. Yeah, as Kent had mentioned, the NPDS permitting process, and even as stated at the workshop, it's a long, arduous process, and a lot's gone into the efforts from Messer and CGMC in recent years to help cities, communities understand their rights in the permitting process. And ultimately, that's kind of where we're at right now. In July, the city received notification from the MPCA on proposed limits. City staff has met with multiple people from MPCA staff, different departments representing, represented there. Likewise, too, the city's also had conference calls and other interaction with others as part of this as well, and we'll be talking about the WSB project in a little bit, and I'll touch a little bit on how that ties to this as well. But it seems like there's kind of a lot of balls in the air that ultimately all kind of line up at the same time nicely. The one concerning part of this is that some of these things are really technical in the NPDS permitting side. Terminology is kind of often left field all by itself. There's lots of people that don't understand how permit limits are derived, ultimately what they mean, how, what you have to do to achieve those, what type of negotiating power, what type of power do you have, and sitting down with the agency to talk about those permit limits, and where can you go from there? And really, I think at this point in time, that's what we're looking to do, is we've kind of worked through a lot of the logistical, logistical items that we've been, that have been proposed by the PCS so far, information that we knew we could request. There's been a lot of exchange of information and data between the city and the state as well up to this point already. One of these items is 7Q10 analysis, the derivation of that. 7Q10 is the establishment of the lowest seven consecutive days of flow over a 10-year period. To look at that, obviously, can be pretty complex regarding how do you calculate that? Where's the data collected from? How do you, how do you calibrate the data, the models used to calculate all those things? And that's one of the things the city's looking to have Flaherty and Hood's assistance on. Flaherty and Hood actually uses outside assistance to basically review their review because it is so highly technical and specialized. And then the other key component of that is also in having them also assist us in drafting our response to the MPCA's ASAP letter. The primary reason for that is to leave our doors open in the event we need to go down the road of a contested case, or we get into a situation where we can actually leverage to actually further negotiate a limit. All of those different things, how they play into that, really are derived in the city's first formal response to the PCA in that response to their ASAP letter, so those are...
Is that what got handed out? The ASAP?
That was a summary of the meeting. So, the ASAP letter included a lot of that stuff that was discussed at that summary.
John, what I handed out was the letter that we received back in early July.
And that was, and you had attached that to that other email.
I had sent that email in earlier today.
Yeah, that would be the ASAP letter, right? So, yeah, that, the ASAP letter, the initial meeting, follow-up conversations, request for information, shared back and forth have brought us to where we are today. The next key piece is to go, like I said, review that 7Q10 analysis. And then after that, the city looks at options as far as we're working through facility study to identify, can we meet these limits being proposed? How can we meet those? What might that cost? And likewise, too, what trading potential exists within the watershed? That ties into the river analysis as well, the basin study that we'll touch on in a little bit here. But those are all kind of options and roads that we're investigating as this process moves forward. And like I said, this is just one piece of that. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
So, this is not, this is not the same thing as our special assessment that we did last year? This is standalone, it's funded out of the wastewater treatment fund?
Correct.
And, and basically, we're hiring Mr. Marx for 33 hours.
Yeah, and I'll actually add to that a little bit. As part of our Messer membership, we actually receive permit review services, but that covers the initial review of the letter we received from the PCA, the ASAP letter, and then some mid-level comments, and they basically review it, they review it, they provide us some talking points, if you will, when we initially met with the PCA. So, a lot of that service has been provided as our Messer membership has already been used. This is in addition to services that aren't rendered as part of our Messer membership.
John, the assessment that we paid, that goes to the coalition. That helps with lobbying efforts. This is an actual more technical.
Yeah, that went to the coalition. This goes to Flaherty and Hood.
Correct.
It's kind of one and the same to a certain extent, but, you know.
Yeah, and the Holland Associates.
Correct.
You might want to expand upon that.
Holland Associates, Holland Associates is a technical expert that Flaherty and Hood uses for things just like this.
And those, they're based out of Washington?
Out of DC, correct.
Yeah, that's...
Yep, they are kind of the face of environmental law across the US. I mean, they've worked on all kinds of high-level stuff from coal to water quality, Chesapeake Bay, I mean, all the big stuff, they seem like they've had a hand in somewhere, somehow, and for good reason why. They are, they are the legal experts in these fields.
So, the 5,000, I mean, that's a good number for what we need right now? Do you foresee that potentially need their services for the next step type of a deal?
Depends on the response to the letter. When we send that letter in response to the PCA's ASAP letter, that'll open another line of communication that may very well depend on what we find out on the river basin analysis. Can we do trading internally with ourselves? Could we do a project there to potentially get credit for phosphorus removal at our wastewater plant? Those types of things play into the matter. Likewise, with funding. If we find out that it's gonna take a couple million dollars to meet our new permit limits at the wastewater plant, how does that play into this as well? At what point do we say, hey, it's worth spending some money to try to fight this and try to take it to the next level to ultimately try to resolve or find a place that's, you know, somewhere reasonable, that we can afford, one, two, meet, and at the same time, still protect water quality? Those are all things that we're trying to keep into our minds that, is it attainable? Does it make sense? Those are all things that Messer, Flaherty and Hood, those are the things that they're working for to try to resolve and to try to find some ends to.
Contested case, potentially.
Is another option, correct.
That was alluded to earlier.
But that does, yeah, this 5,000 does not consist of any of that additional analysis beyond the letter and beyond the 7Q10 review.
And that's obviously part of our concern and why we want to, to look to bring these guys on, is that, as we noted before, we, we're still paying millions of dollars off upgrading a wastewater plant to help address some of these issues of which they're now saying, potentially, sorry, you gotta do more.
So, can we expand the local option sales tax another 10 years?
You have to go through legislation.
That's what I, when I was reading this. Just a question, and I'd been asked this before by someone who's a wastewater treatment professor at UNLV. What do we do, the reverse osmosis, when we, when we're cleaning up our water supply system? That, that residue is just dumped into our sanitary sewer?
Correct.
Because there was talk in here about drying it too and landfilling it or doing something like that, but that was extremely expensive, or?
Yeah. And one thing was referenced at the workshop, the salty parameters.
Yeah.
So, typically, a lot of cities across the state are seeing chloride limits, which was a new thing. Cities have been monitoring for chlorides particularly. Chloride hardness, bicarbonate is just a monitor only, so the PCA can understand, okay, is this a problem, is it not? And then ultimately, that's usually the first step. Okay, we've monitored, we know how big of an issue it is. All right, now we're gonna implement limits in wastewater treatment permits. And then as part of that, the big issue has always been chlorides. Cities that have really hard water, there's a lot of softeners in town, people have to have softeners. In Hutchinson, we don't. So, in communities that don't have, or that do have softeners everywhere, they have high chlorides in their wastewater. Well, they can't meet high chlorides. One of the things is build a new water plant to RO or lime softening standards so that you don't have to have water softeners everywhere. Well, we've already done that, so we're kind of a unique trial case. The problem with that is, is we don't have chloride limits being proposed. We have hardness, bicarbonate, specific conductance, which are concentrated by products of the RO concentrate process. So, we eliminate the chlor, need for a chlorine limit, but now we got three new limits being proposed because of the elimination of softening within our community. So, there's, it's kind of a catch-22 or a double-edged sword. We fixed one problem to create three more.
And that's specifically what she asked me, is what do you do with the residue from the RO?
Right, and the PCA's looked at all those options too, to say, hey, how about removing that concentrate from the water soft, from the RO process? That costs a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of drying utilities to dry that material to, and actually find a home to use it somewhere is a whole 'nother can of worms. There's so many different nuances associated with it, that the PCA's determined that it's not economically viable to treat four chlorides, hardness, bicarbonate, and specific conductance in Minnesota. So, they're starting to look at granting variances for everybody. Well, variances cost money, they, you still have to monitor, you still have those permit limits, you're not actually improving water quality because of it. So, there's, the environmental advocates aren't happy about all these variances being granted, and yeah, it's just a, it's a tangled web.
Well, the rule is if you're granting all these variances, you're supposed to change the rule. But, I mean, that, well, that's planning and zoning basic.
And that's one of the questions we're asking the PCA at this very time, is why, why are you issuing us a limit when you know there's a flaw in the rule? They know there's a flaw. They're gonna be working on revising the rule this year, but they said, well, it's the rule on the books, and we have to give you that limit per statute. We have to issue a limit, and we can't wait until that rulemaking, pending the outcome of that rulemaking. We can't wait to issue that limit. So, it's an interesting, interesting debate and process.
Didn't they approve the wastewater plant to begin with? They, they knew we were originally gonna be, the idea was to put the RO into the Bass Pond.
Yep.
And that wasn't ultimately approved, so they knew, you know, what we were doing.
They didn't know they'd have a big push on chlorides and salty parameters and all that stuff when that decision was made.
Yeah, but I think more concern is the phosphorus limit.
That's...
And where that's conceivably going.
Yeah, point three, yeah.
You know, and that was known at that time, and that's the inconsistencies with phosphorus limits across the state, you know? Basically, when you achieve a one or sub-one like we have in, in recent years, since our, our new permit was put in place basically when the new plant was built with the, the 1.0 milligrams per liter parameter, you know, now we achieved 0.6, 0.65. Now, they think we can go to half of that if they just set the bar lower because we've achieved down to that point. Why can't we go further? So, it's, they keep kind of utilizing your historical performance against you, because you always need a buffer up against the limit. You're not gonna try to achieve 0.99 and, you know, risk, you know, failing to meet your permit.
It's also interesting, they use the same logic to improve water quality in the crow. The limit of 0.32 being proposed, they assume we're gonna meet the limit of actually 0.15, which is half of the limit they're proposing to achieve the water quality standard. So, they, 0.32 is the limit, they know that's not the number, they need, they want a number even lower than that. So, it's even worth noting, too, when we built the wa, when we built the wastewater plant, we removed our phosphorus, 80 to 90% of our phosphorus was removed and treated and taken out of the waste stream from the discharge of the wastewater plant. They want us to reduce that another 70%. So, I mean, it gives you an idea from just an effectiveness standpoint, and you can imagine from a cost-effectiveness standpoint, what that ends up meaning within the facility itself, so.
And then, I mean, in this documentation, it also noted that they were imposing these rules on the yeast plant, right? They have to go down, because they were a major phosphorus input into the river.
They have non-contact cooling water in their process.
Yeah, and, and so that impacts them, how do they deal with it? And the other thing that I noticed in the financial stuff was that now they're not using city water anymore, they're using their wells only.
Primarily, yes.
And that was because we took a hit on the, the water side because of that, so.
Right, quarter of a while ago.
Their non-contact cooling water typically is about a 0.27 to 0.25 concentration, so they're already below that 0.32 limit. That's the, that's the natural, that's the other interesting point.
Background.
That's natural background. That's the phosphorus concentration coming out of the ground. So, any laundry detergent, food, we wash down the sink, any nutrient that goes in the wastewater system, it's basically a complete removal to get to that 0.32 limit being proposed. There's no room for any affluency within that river to, to meet nutrient standards.
But you mentioned, again, there's talk about the river basin, and that's a discussion with the next item, that maybe there's some correlation between those.
Right, so, yeah, it's a, this'll be a, a process, so I'm sure we'll be back at some point in time to talk more about wastewater permit.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by John to approve. Any other discussion on it yet?
It's always fun to read something nerdy like that, for me.
I do like it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, professional service agreement with WSB and Associate Incorporated for Lakes and River Basin Preliminary Engineering Study.
Just quickly, and I'll hand it off, John. Again, John's been the lead on this, having the communications with the consultants, but there is a handout in front of you, which is the actual professional services agreement with the signature page on the... But there is a handout in front of you, uh, which is the actual professional services agreement with the signature page on the front. And then it has the couple-page proposal letter and then the, of the other attachments on a typical services agreement. So with that, otherwise, uh, this has been reviewed by resource allocation committee. Uh, we've talked about it a couple of times here at the, uh, the council level. Uh, this is a, what we're calling a preliminary engineering study. Uh, we don't wanna call it a feasibility study. Uh, we, we wanna imply that this is feasible and that's more of a nuance with potential, uh, funding mechanisms looking forward. And, uh, with that, I'll hand it off to John, he can get into the specifics of, uh, what WSB is proposing to do for us.
Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, as Kent had noted, the scope of work included. Um, I, and I also think it's great too in the, the second page, not the signature page, but the second page near the heading. Um, it sums it up really well, it's a process of restoring, protecting, and enhancing habitats within Campbell and Otter Lakes for the city. Uh, I think that sums it up really well. Uh, the scope of work includes three primary points that we're talking about, uh, working with WSB to complete. Uh, one is to review the historical data, the data we collected with the study here in the last year or so. Um, also additional information that may be available through the Corps of Engineers, local watersh- water, watershed, not watershed districts, but the Crow River organizational water, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District. Looking at all different kinds of options available for, um, improving the river for, um, not just water quality, but also for recreation and habitat. Um, those obviously are wide-reaching and can contain lots of different avenues to explore. Um, another interesting part of that too is to also engage local experts, if you will, people interested, stakeholders within the community, city staff, uh, soil and water staff, um, and others that, uh, may be determined uh, to basically develop goals and priorities and objectives of this type of approach. Um, what types of things do we want to explore? Um, ultimately, what is the outcome that we're trying to achieve? Um, one key component of that, as I mentioned in the previous council item, is to look at potential opportunities for trading. Um, with such a shallow basin, we know it's typically been that deep. Now, for the last forty years, it hasn't gotten really any shallower in most of the ba, the main basin. Um, we know there's been tons and tons and tons of sediment that have come into that river, into that lake, and where's it all gone? So one of the things we're proposing to dig into and look at, and we've had conversations with the PCA about this already, is if we did remove a bunch of sediment near the mouth of the river, where it comes into the actual reservoir or into the basin. Um, if that material could be dropped out and accumulated and removed periodically, could we receive credit for removing nutrients and phosphorus and solids, um, within the basin, within lo- the local watershed to help us maintain or achieve or improve the water quality within the, within the watershed? And that's something that they're fascinating, fascinated for us to look into. Um, they've had other communities that have looked at it. Uh, most of them have proposed using like an alum treatment on a real large scale for treating, um, to precipitate phosphorus, actually within a lake. Um, the Albert Lees, the Fairmonts of the world, those types of communities that have done dredging in the past. Um, they've talked about doing something similar to this. Um, but Hutchinson's in a real unique place in that we're being proposed to have a really tight phosphorus limit. This seems like it would actually have some viability to it. The PCA and the questions and things that they asked us to look for, um, they say this is, there is some potential here. So just because of the, we're in a unique place, uh, uh, unique relationship with this, with the river. Um, so I think that's, there's opportunity too. It's not just looking at enhancing, restoring, um, there's also some regulatory benefit potentially as well. So that's something else we'll be digging into as part of this. And then also is the pre- prepare preliminary concept plans and cost estimates. That's something we got some ranges for when we did the study with BAR here a year and a half ago. Um, this would actually help narrow those down depending on the goals and objections I, goals and objectives identified by the technical advisory panel. Um, this would really refine what those costs are. Um, there, I'm sure there will be some, a couple, couple options to consider as well with that, depending on different types of disposal sites, different ways we're uh, gonna handle the dredge material, where it could go. Um, likewise too with the different dredging options, dewatering, um, there's lots of variables as part of this. But that's what the technical advisory panel's really for, is to help kinda hone in on some of those things and get things pointing in the right direction so we can really help refine those costs. Um, and then not included as part of the scope of work you see in front of you, there are items four and five um, that aren't part of the not-to-exceed amount, but they were included in there just as a potential. Um, the next logical step would be, um, pursuing funding options through grants. Um, and then also the development of environmental assessment, environmental impact statements. Those are not part of the scope, I just wanted to be clear with that. Um, but the first three items identified would be, um, we've had significant talk, uh, significant talks and conversations with WSB to this point about the project. I think they're pretty well-informed. Um, they have a good staff on hand that worked on the, the primary one was at Champlin, I believe, is the uh, big dredging project that was just recently completed here, so, um, they've got local experience as well. So, um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, one in the packet, you know, they would help prepare for funding applications, there's a little higher cost, but included that, it's revised.
The, the primary reason is we don't know what the outcome of one, two, and three will be. So we don't wanna commit to four and five, because if we go through one, two, and three, and four and five aren't necessary, then we just won't have to pursue that or modify. Um, that, that way, if we need, if we decide to take those initial steps or those additional steps, we can certainly come forward at that time for approval.
Yeah, we could amend this agreement, was our thought, and we really, we don't know the effort that might be entailed with any given funding application.
Yeah.
You know, depending on the, the source of the dollars.
That was the other question was, you know, they talk in both documents about in funding applications for November two thousand eighteen, but these other preliminary steps aren't gonna be done until first, it was January, but now it's February.
That's part of it as well, just the timing of a lot of these things. There's different timelines associated with so many different funding cycles that, um, yeah, that would be, uh, the logical next step would be if, if this all hashes out to be something that's palatable, something to pursue, and to start looking at, obviously, the next one, the next logical step would be to identify a potential funding source for it. And so with that too, uh, the first step of that would be, alright, what's the cycle on all these things? So we know what critical deadlines there would be for all the different types of options that are available. And there are a lot of them out there, believe it or not. Um, they, they've started being more flexible with some of these, some of these funds for these different projects now. Um, not sure why that is or wh- what it is, but it seems like they're pursuing funding from a habitat standpoint and they're getting it.
This would be a good project. The motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thanks, John. Uh, we have ordinance number eighteen dash seven ninety, ordinance amending section one fifty-four point zero zero four in section one five four point zero six four C of the city code allowing dog care, dog daycare boarding facilities by conditional use permit in a C four fringe commercial district. And amending the definition of dog daycare to section one five four point zero zero four with favorable planning commission recommendation, waive first readings at second reading and adoption for October ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council members, um, as, uh, Gary had noted there, uh, this is an ordinance amendment that I've been working with on a, with a local business. Um, Dana's Dog Spa out on Highway seven near Casey's, uh, used to be downtown. Uh, if you remember several years ago, they had looked at a, an option of having a kind of a dog daycare at their downtown facility. We decided that with the density of downtown and, uh, the amount of people in that small area, probably wasn't the best idea. So now they're in a location that is more conducive to having, uh, like I said, a boarding facility. And, um, what I've come up with is, is a ability to allow up to twelve dogs on site. Um, we feel that that's a number that's not like a commercial kennel, that's more something that would be, again, a smaller scale similar to maybe what a veterinary clinic would have for the ability to have for dogs on site. And that folks would be able to have their dogs there during the day, which was already permitted, but this would allow them to have the overnight care. And we've talked about not allowing outdoor kennel runs just because, you know, if a dog is barking and it's inside, obviously, it's going to be less, uh, noisy. And, uh, so we thought inside would be good, and then that was their business plan as well as not to have outdoor runs. But they would have an outdoor exercise area and an area where obviously the dog would be able to be let out and to go to the bathroom and such. So, um, we talked about this at the planning commission last week. Uh, there were a few questions about, um, you know, the times, and we adjusted that a little bit about when the animals could be outside and came up with a pretty good plan, I guess. And at, at this point, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance. I'll be open to any questions you have.
Um, I had sent you a note, you know, there, this actually got added as a conditional use in two thousand twelve to the C four. And that, at that time, it was at a request of a business, um, and that included outdoor runs. But you had said they never started that up, so does that conditional use that's gone and, since they haven't ever?
I don't, um, yeah, basically with a conditional use permit, if it doesn't start operation within one year, it becomes null and void. So that one didn't go anywhere, um, and we did allow in that one outdoor kennel runs. But my thought is, uh, with this one is that through the conditional use permit process, we can work with the applicant to come up with the best plan for the way their site is situated and, um.
For the outdoor play area.
For the outdoor play area and such.
Sure.
And then if somebody is really interested in having a, you know, more of a indoor/outdoor run, they'd probably have to be in one of our industrial areas where we allow kennels versus a, the boarding facility.
Oh, just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
We weren't infringing on somebody that had already started something, so.
And the times are from, from nine in the evening till eight in the morning, they won't be outside, right?
Ten, ten to seven.
Yeah.
They changed it.
We changed that.
I have, in the, in the report there in the beginning page, I had a copy and paste error. We changed it from ten PM to seven AM, and that coincides with, I believe, the city noise ordinance on a lot of items.
Amplified music.
Amplified music and, because sometimes, I believe, some of the construction activity. So we thought that would be a good consistent way to handle it.
I think it looks good, I think it's something that people are going to use.
Yeah, and that's really why this came up, is there's a demand for this type of, again, it's not just a typical kennel, it's more like the, the dogs at home and a hotel almost.
Right.
Yeah, if you go away on vacation, it's a little nicer, um.
Exactly.
Just to be able to take care of them.
Sure.
It's good.
So you can come up to my business and just walk out back, uh, out the back door and start barking, so the dogs will bark.
What would you handle that, Gary?
No, I think this is a, this is a thing that's, uh, I think will be well-used. And there's a high demand for it, I know my wife would, uh, be excited to know that you can take our dog to doggy daycare.
No swimming pool though for the dogs?
That's phase two, I think.
Yeah, I know there's one outside of town here, not over towards Lester Prairie, that's got some pools.
That's, uh, that's by, uh, New Germany.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, the Paz, or.
Yeah, I can't remember the name of it.
Pazin Resort.
Yeah, yeah, that's where Nova goes.
Yeah, doggy, yeah.
That's the doggy spa, yes.
Well, my dogs got to go to doggy daycare Saturday morning, they went swimming. They didn't get to retrieve anything, no.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, ordinance number eighteen dash seven nine one, ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Hutchinson to include a certain land owned by Hutchinson Technology Incorporated in Upanore located in Hutchinson Township, section thirty-two with favorable planning commission recommendation, waive first reading, set second reading and adoption for October ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Yes, uh, what we have here is a first annexation that we've had in a number of years and, uh, similar to the last one, it's not anything big at all. This is really more a matter of cleaning up a, kind of a discrepancy from years ago when the HDI project was built. The eastern driveway for HDI that comes in off Highway seven was actually always out of city limits versus in city limits. And, um, HDI as well as Upanore have requested that the city annex that. And, uh, we followed all the steps required to do an annexation by ordinance, uh, notified the state, notified the adjoining property owners, notified the township. Haven't had any comments at all from anybody, uh, relative to that. And really, um, I believe the plan is, is that once this is annexed, there would be a potential opportunity to turn that, uh, HDI driveway into a potential public street. So really, that's the impetus of this. And what you have here is that ordinance that will be required to approve, uh, for that. And then there'll be a, I believe we have to do a second reading on this next time, or not? Uh, next time for this, and then it'll go to the state for their approval, and it takes about sixty to ninety days in order to go into effect. So this is kind of our step, and then it goes to the state after this. Any questions on that?
So since there's some land in between, just that it's connected to city property on the south side? Okay, or Highway seven?
On the, on the west side, you know, we're adjacent to city limits.
Yeah.
So, so I don't know if, if you're talking about.
I couldn't tell where the land, where it cut off, so.
Sure, yep, it's basically, um, it would just.
North and south, actually.
Yeah, it would just be ex.
So it's just the road was a private driveway in?
In the township.
In township, and it's owned, owned by Upanore and Hutch Technologies, so there's.
The land on the west side of it's actually city property.
Yes, it is. Well, it's not city property.
In city limits, yeah.
Yes. The other important note on this is, is that I checked with the county. Typically, typically with an annexation, we're required to pay some tax value to the county for the lost tax revenue that they would have gotten, excuse me, to the township. And in this instance, the county didn't have any valuation on this property, just because it's a road and they had all the value on the, the other parcels there, the buildings on them. So we won't be required to pay the township any fees for this.
Well, I know it's something that's been talked about, you know, as part of the process.
Exactly. So again, this is just, um, something in front of you tonight, planning commission recommended approval, and staff would recommend approval as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the, that ordinance.
I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Resolution number one four nine four nine, resolution setting Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority two thousand nineteen preliminary tax levy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is the first of three preliminary tax levies that are in front of you tonight. This first one is for the HRA. And as you know, by state statute, the HRA and EDA both have a calculation, um, that determines their maximum tax levy each year. And that is based on our city's estimated market value. Um, this year, the HRA's, um, statutory limit is a hundred and eighty-six thousand twenty-three dollars. And that is the amount that the HR, HRA board has requested for their two thousand nineteen levy. And just, uh, just to point out, that levy amount barely covers all the wages and benefits for the HRA staff. And then they have some other expenditures that they fund with other sources. So this levy pretty much funds their entire staff. Last year's levy for, for two thousand eighteen, the levy was at a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred sixty-four. So this represents an eight-point-six percent increase with the levy request they have for two thousand nineteen. So in front of you tonight, we're asking you to approve the preliminary tax levy of a hundred and eighty-six thousand twenty-three dollars. And just as a reminder, when we come back in December to approve the final. And just as a reminder, when we come back in December to approve the final levies, we can always go down, but we can't go up.
So with the revised valuations, capacity, I mean, does that affect this or this is the current numbers?
Right. These are the current numbers. We always had the up-to-date market values. We just didn't have that tax capacity. County had to run all those market values through the state's class, class rates to determine the tax capacity.
And then under expenses and maybe just something, you know, it has project fund. It's like the fourth from the bottom of expenses and then there's an asterisk. But that's one area that showed an increase, but didn't know what the asterisk referred to and.
Yeah, I, I simply passed along Gene Ward's budget. I typically don't see it in this detail.
Maybe that's something.
Where are you, fourth from the bottom, are you saying?
Under other expenses.
Under other expenses.
Oh, under other expenses.
Twenty-one, four, seventy-two, ten.
Right. Yeah, I didn't see a footnote on that. I apologize.
But maybe there's a plan for some other funding or projects that they're working on that's.
Sure. I, I can clarify that with her and.
Sure.
Get back to you guys.
Otherwise, make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Resolution number one four nine five zero. Resolution setting Hutchinson Economic Development Authority, two thousand nineteen preliminary tax levy.
Yes, similar to the HRA levy that we just talked about. The EDA, their, their statutory, statutory levy limit for two thousand nineteen is a hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and three dollars. The board, the EDA board is requesting that amount. And again, similar to the HRA, that amount predominantly covers their staff wages and benefits and then some other operating expenses as well. Last year for two thousand eighteen levy, they were at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred. So the, the request for two thousand nineteen is about a seven point seven percent increase. So tonight we're asking you to set the preliminary levy for two thousand nineteen at a hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and three dollars.
Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Resolution number one four nine five one. Resolution approving the general fund and debit service fund preliminary two thousand nineteen tax levies.
All right, this is the tax levy we're proposing for the general fund and the debt levy. Looking at a general fund tax levy of five million one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine. That, as you may recall from the budget workshop two weeks ago, is a four point five percent tax levy increase. And then our debt levy is at the two point two million, which we've been sitting at for several years now. In fact, we can look at that debt levy. With our debt management plan, you can see with this graph that we're not going to have to increase this levy until the year twenty twenty-three. And then it'll just incrementally increase by one and a half to one and three-quarter percent until we get to our new maximum levy of two point six million out in the year of twenty thirty-two. So several years yet before we get to that, um, new cap. And then several years before we start seeing an increase at all. So that's the debt levy. Back, um, back at the budget workshop, we had some estimated numbers in for the tax capacity. I included it in your packet as well, but this, this analysis that we look at to show the impact on the median, median home value, we did plug in the new tax capacity estimate from the county, which actually went up eight point nine percent. I had, had an estimate at three percent at the workshop. But you can see what a, what an impact that has on this tax levy. As option number one, if we don't do anything, no levy increase. It would basically offset the increased value in the median home from that hundred and fifty thousand value to a hundred and sixty thousand. So basically, uh, no impact with zero levy basically offsets the value. But then you can look at the tax rate change. That's the big impact here. Our tax rate would go down over five point eight percent to just a little over sixty-five percent there. But the option we're looking at for this preliminary tax levy is option number three, a three point one percent overall levy increase. And that would still result in a tax rate that would be about three point eight percent less than our two thousand eighteen rate. And then if we follow that down for the impact on the median home, be about a twenty-six dollar increase on city tax only for two thousand nineteen. And that's about a two point nine percent increase. So it was very positive news, seeing this tax capacity number from the county. I, I think it's starting to show that we're seeing new value and not just changes in existing value. So I think we'll see this trend at least for the next couple of years as well with everything that's been going on in town here in the last couple of years. So that's very positive. Otherwise, the preliminary budget, Matt covered quite a bit of it at the workshop. We, we did shift the, the staff wage grid two percent. We had some inflationary increases for workers' compensation. The big, the big factor was a zero percent increase in our health premiums. And then we did talk about some future increases for the next budget that you see will have some minor dental life and long-term disability built into the next budget that you look at for the truth and taxation meeting. Other than that, uh, we do have some more work to do on that general fund budget as Matt noted. We're gonna be looking at possibly HSA funding and fleet funding, see what we can do within this next budget iteration. And then also looking at expenditures, um, year-to-date through September, October, see how they're trending, see if there's anything we can do with expenditures as well. So with that, um, asking, asking you to approve the preliminary tax levy for two thousand nineteen at a total of three point one percent in that, again, that's a four point five percent increase in the general fund and a zero percent increase for the debt levy.
But overall, overall tax levy increase is?
Preliminary is, well, for the city side is three point one. When you include the EDA and the HRA, it's a three point three percent.
And as you mentioned before on the others, we can always go down, but we can't go up.
Right, correct.
I think the, the best thing to communicate to the public is that our preliminary budget is at a three point three percent tax levy increase for right now.
So the property tax hike on a hundred and sixty thousand dollar house is approximately ten cents a day.
Yeah.
Not bad.
Less than that.
Yeah, less than that, yeah. I like round numbers, though. I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, city tax levy, preliminary tax levy.
Second. Motion by John, second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Setting truth and taxation hearing for December fourth, two thousand eighteen at six PM.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as a part of the preliminary budget process, we're also required to set our annual public hearing in regards to the tax levy and budget. Generally, we've done that either the first Tuesday or Thursday in December based off of the county's public hearing, which is the first Thursday. Staff is recommending that we host ours the first Tuesday in December, which is December fourth at six PM, which is the earliest it can be.
I'll make them, I'll approve that truth and taxation hearing for December fourth.
Second, motion by Mary, second by John to set the truth and taxation hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Setting hearing before the council requested by Peter Newbauer to challenge denial of food vendor license.
Uh, Mayor and Council, obviously you may recall at our last city council meeting, we denied a application request for a permit. Per our city code, that applicant has the right to request a hearing in front of the, the city council. We have formally received that request and so on. I guess asking you tonight to, to look at setting a, a date and time to, to have that hearing. Just a couple of things, though. The city code does note that the hearing should be the full city council. I know we've done hearings in the past with a partial, but it does note the full city council. Generally, we don't have hearings during a regular city council meeting. Doesn't mean you can't. But, uh, lastly, I guess I would note that, um, we'd probably want some, at least sufficient time to make sure everything gets properly communicated to the applicant on, on the process that's used for it and how that would work. And so at the earliest, and I'm not sure what you're looking at, if you're looking at doing something before a regular council meeting, I'd say the earliest would be our next council meeting, otherwise the second council meeting in October. Or you can really pick any other random date or time to, to conduct that hearing. How long do you anticipate the hearing taking?
Say an hour.
We don't have a workshop before the next council meeting?
No.
You know, Chief Hatton's going to be out of town. Is that something that we would probably like, like him to be attending?
Yep. Because his report was the basis of the denial, so.
He should be here.
Well, we need to have a workshop on the twenty-third. About anything else? You anticipate, Matt? I'm sure I can come up with something if you want, but nothing at, uh, nothing at this time there, there's anything scheduled.
I don't think it matters. I know I will be, uh, out of town at the next city council meeting, so.
The next one.
The ninth, the ninth as well.
Dan's bad.
Be gone too, so.
Yeah, so that's not a good one.
Does it work to have it at four thirty on the twenty-third of October for everybody? Maybe do it four, just.
Four o'clock.
Yeah.
Just. I'll make a motion to set it for four o'clock on October twenty-third.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by John, to set the hearing for the twenty-third of October at four o'clock.
Just curious, are you aware of anything that's changed in term here?
I'm not, yeah.
Any other discussion? Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Governance, we have the tall grass and noxious weed monthly report for August twenty, or August two thousand eighteen. Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from August twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for August two thousand eighteen. Planning Commission minutes from August twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
So everything's still tracking good, it looks like?
Yep. Ken?
Yeah.
What do you have for us tonight?
Uh, just a few quick, uh, project updates. Uh, Second Avenue Bridge, uh, still pushing ahead, obviously a little bit of weather here lately hasn't helped the cause. We're targeting, uh, well, the contractors targeting Friday, October fifth at this point. So just a heads up, uh, obviously we're requesting a justification, I guess, rain delays, high water, site conditions, et cetera, from him. And then we'll use that documentation to formulate a change order to the specified completion date. So that'll be forthcoming, but obviously we want to figure out what the completion date is going to be ultimately here first of all, and then we'll, we'll work on that. And, uh, yeah, if need be, we'll have a, a liquidated damages conversation, uh, with the contractor, potentially with the city council on that front. But we, I think he's going to hopefully be able to, to compile enough justification between the high water and the amount of rain days we've had out there, so.
Is there railings going on the top of the?
Yes.
Yeah?
Metal railings, yeah.
And I heard that the railing contractor is behind.
Yep, we've heard that also, but you know, we need to, need a little bit more than just hearing that, I guess, from a documentation standpoint to start to get into, you know, contractual delays and revising the completion date. So we're just hoping it gets done sooner than later and, uh, yeah, there'll be enough justification to justify, I guess, the, the delay in the end.
Will it open without that being done or does that work off the railings?
Yeah, that's, I think, more of a, a bridge engineer question, I guess. I don't know if I can answer that off the top of my head. I'd have to ask our consultant that question. Other than that, Century Avenue, we're onto phase three, which is the, uh, the east end of the project down to Jefferson. Uh, they are going to begin subcutting on that end of the project tomorrow. Obviously, the, the weather late last week softened things up a bit, so they wanted to let it dry out a little bit. And they're gonna start, uh, doing the common excavation on that end. And if the first two phases are in the indication, uh, the contractor will move pretty quickly hopefully on that phase and, uh, stay ahead of schedule as they are right now. Uh, pavement management program up on the northeast side of town. Yeah, not so pretty up there. Obviously, bad timing with the rain last week, especially up on Spruce Street. So, uh, we've been trying to keep in contact with residents, uh, make their, their access or their lack of access as, as bearable as possible. So, yeah, bad timing. The rain came right after the utility work up there and, uh, we ended up with, uh, wet subsurface trench soils up on Spruce in particular, so.
So what happens with that to dry it?
Well, we keep our fingers crossed for sixty-degree sunny days or so here this time of year, but the, uh, ten-day forecast doesn't show a whole lot of that. So the contractor will just keep pushing. Uh, well, we have soil or a subgrade correction measures within the contract. We, we've utilized GeoGrid stabilization fabric in the past and we have some of that. We have a nominal quantity of that within the contract. So we have, we have measures and means accounted for, you know, to be utilized on poor subgrade soils, so. But our hope is we get a little weather to cooperate, the, uh, the soils get worked a bit, dry out to some degree and, uh, we can get the materials down and not incur a whole lot of extra costs. But obviously, yeah. Lack of rain would be good, especially this time of year, even if we don't get the warm days. South central drainage area, phase one improvements. Like I mentioned at the last council meeting, we are having a public open house meeting and it's more so neighborhood in, in nature. We, we invited the hundred and seventeen properties that we surveyed, uh, plus a few more, I guess, to give us a pretty nice, uh, you know, canvas of the area, the immediate adjacent property owners up there. So, uh, we're hoping to see people, uh, next Wednesday, October third, five thirty to seven PM here at the council chambers. So if you're interested, yeah, stop by. We're just gonna be, you know, have it in an open house format and we, we stress that on our invite. You know, there's gonna be no formal presentation, no formal Q and A session of any sort. We just wanna bring people through. We'll have plenty of staff here to answer questions, gather input and, and go from there. And yeah, if we, if we learn that there is, uh, I guess, a significant amount of, of negativity or posit. or positivity for that matter, obviously, either way, we'll report back to council.
Kent, is there another, at least a picture of a pond that you could take that's correct?
Yeah.
I mean, not, not one that has, you know, waist-high weeds growing around it and everything else?
Chackle, but yes, of course, we could get a picture of a pond and...
Something that...
Yeah.
I was thinking of that one, south side of Montana Street, or there's residential or the golf course road over just...
On Heritage?
Yeah.
That area?
It's a fairly large pond, it's residential area, it's got some of the cattails and logger growth, but...
Yeah, I always think of, with the magnitude, the maybe more so the hydraulics and how much it's going to be recessed is, in my mind, it's gonna probably mirror the Northwoods Pond, probably more so than anything, and where there's tree plantings around the Northwoods Pond also, and yeah.
Yeah, the part, part of it, you know, it's important to show.
Well, we can definitely do that, but yeah, like I said, I'm not expecting a whole lot of... Yeah, we didn't hear a whole lot the other night as far as negativity.
I actually had a couple of people talk to me afterwards, and they appreciated they came because they wanted to learn more, and appreciated the presentation, and thought that things looked nice, and talked to a few other of their neighbors, and kinda came away from the same feelings, so. And just the discussion was good, and I think you addressed the safety issues real well, and how the design will help mitigate that, and again, the concern about birds and geese and not saying that there won't be, so, but really, the way they work, you don't see much of that, so.
I think, I think most people were, I guess, surprised about how many ponds we do have in the city.
A lot of them.
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, like I said, we invited, yeah, the one-seventeen, plus almost another two dozen, yeah, one-hundred-and-forty properties, give or take, so, you know, not only to the meeting, but also, you know, we have, we have our email addresses on there, our phone number, you know, where we even allude to, we'll meet you at your property, no different than any other project, if you want us to swing by and explain it to you and have a conversation about it. You know, myself or other engineering staff are willing to do that, so by all means, I think we've, hopefully, if people wanna learn more, there's plenty of opportunities to learn more. Lastly, leaf vacuuming starts Tuesday, October ninth, so... Fast approaching, as usual, and I know there's already a little bit of it going on out there. We would like people not to put the leaves in the gutter prior to the day before their their leaf vacuuming service, which is the day after their garbage service, so.
Keep the sticks out of it, branches.
Yeah, keep the debris and the branches and the sticks, only leaves, I guess, even, even grass for that matter, you know, we, it's supposed to be leaf vacuum, vacuuming solely, that's it.
Thanks, Kent. Mark?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Steve, you have something for us tonight?
Just one thing, um, asked me about, I don't know who does this, but on the South Grade Road Bridge, Kent?
Yep.
On the south side where people go walking down, they go fishing.
Staircase there?
Yeah, and they just asked if more gravel could be laid down there to, at the base, you know, in that whole section where people stand and sit, you know, to fish, you know, there's a lot of rock, so it's uneven, and you're going down and...
Yeah.
And dark sometimes, apparently some gravel got filled in earlier this year, but they said if some more could be added...
I'm guessing it's moved a little bit over time, and yeah, I'm not sure if gravel got added earlier this year.
Thought it, yeah.
If that would have been us, I wasn't aware of that either, I haven't been down, I went, walked down there last year at one point, I recall, but yeah, I'll take a look.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Steve. Chad?
Well, I think as I just noticed, our, we have a council meeting scheduled on Christmas, so if we wanted to make plans to cancel it or move it, I mean, we can have it on Christmas, makes no difference to me.
Actually, no, we can't, so legally, we can't. No, we were actually gonna bring something forward in October to look at rescheduling that, 'cause we need to get that out then in advance to the public.
Just so people can make travel plans or whatever they're doing.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll put it on the next agenda, so.
Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thanks, Chad.
Nice to hear that you're already thinking about Christmas, so.
How many days till Christmas, Chad?
Well, one other thing, if people wanted to take the survey for the Parks Department for our master parks plan, that'd be great. We had a nice meeting with the consultant last night at Parks Board.
We've had over, what, eight-hundred people?
Eight-hundred people have responded, which is great. But if people are watching tonight and want something to do for nine minutes, take that survey, and it'll help us shape the future, so.
So is there kind of a deadline, or...
Yeah, it sounded like in October sometime they're gonna pull the plug.
Yeah, no, that was...
So Chad, how do they get to take the survey, just go online and...
There was an email blast sent out to five thousand residents, and I believe, is it linked to our...
Yep, if you go to the Park and Rec page on our city website, if you scroll down, you'll see Parks Master Plan, and there's a link, there's also a link to the social pointing, where people can provide comments on specific parks within the community. But yeah, we've had a tremendous response, so.
But that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Chad. Mary?
I just have a couple of things. I was gonna say that Matt, Gary, and myself are gonna attend the LMC regional meeting in St. Cloud, and that's next week, so we'll be doing that. Don't forget this weekend, it's your white goods, it's your pickups, it's the September Get Rid Of Your Junk. You know, I mean, it's a good thing, but just remember, it's two items out there.
And it's single-family residential, too.
Right, and if it's raining, you know, tomorrow, don't put it out tomorrow, wait till the next day and put it out. I noticed some people have things sitting out already, and they've been sitting out there in the rain.
For a month.
Well, for a week or whatever, and, you know, they physically are being picked up, so, so please be at least considerate of those who are picking those items up.
You mean the couch gets heavier when it's...
Yeah, it gets a little heavier, I think. And also, before the snow flies and the river freezes over, are we gonna do anything about those big trees and limbs that are hanging out by the dam? You know, I mean...
I know we've talked about this in the past, and obviously, yeah, Mr. Arndt used to lead this cause, but anyways, yeah, I think, obviously now with the flow being up, it would be, yeah, unsafe, problematic.
Right.
Years ago, we waited till things, it was low-flow, if not even frozen, if I remember years ago. Yeah, I think it's more of a aesthetic, maybe question, Mother Nature type question, and I appreciate impact on this, 'cause I know my feeling is, you know, with the spillway, you know, it's basically Mother Nature, it's run of the river, and this is the debate Bill and I used to have, and branches and things of that nature are part of that run of the river, Mother Nature aspect of, of the spillway we created. Obviously, if there were trash out there, if there were shopping cart or bicycle or something like that, we would retrieve it and, and when it was safe to do so. But I guess, how proactive do you want us to be on tree removal from the structure would be the question in my mind.
I guess my concern was that we don't end up with a whole bunch of them stacked up there, and then it looks like we're lumberjacks here.
No, yeah, within reason, obviously, but yeah, yeah, I think it's, right now, I look at it as Mother Nature, obviously, from my point of view.
Well, and I notice that...
And, but that can be debated, and we'll, we'll do what we're directed to do, obviously, but yeah, I would entertain opinions, thoughts on that front.
What's, they're nice roosting spots for the cormorants.
That's what I was gonna say.
Actually, if you pay attention, I've been watching this, I don't believe the cormorants sit on the timber all that much, for whatever reason.
But there are birds that do sit there.
They perch on the rocks, if you, but I've known, I've been thinking that myself, John, going down there.
I just always think about the, what is, Pigeon Lake up by...
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I see it on other lakes, too, they love the upright dead trees, but I don't think they're sitting on the timber that much down there, but here nor there.
I think having some is nice, like you said, it just gives a little, breaks it up a little bit, and does provide a roosting, but it's heavier, I think, is a point where some of it should be removed.
Yeah, how about we do this, and I, I, this ran through my mind, you know, just walking down there on occasion is, yeah, there's a paramount what that's accumulated, I don't think it's to the magnitude where it's problematic by any means, or, you know, it's a lumberyard, I guess, like you said, but I think we just see what the winter does and the spring does, and hopefully we get some, somewhat of a flushing event, you know, where Mother Nature, we get enough snow, or we get the, the spring runoff to cooperate, and, you know, some of it gets taken downstream with the flow, and, and if that doesn't help our cause, come, come next summer, when flows typically go down, I say this typically, it has been the case last few years, but typically go down come August, you know, we, we go in and, and retrieve accordingly.
Well, with the railroad trestle out of there now, that, don't get a blockage down there anymore.
Exactly, stuff, once it gets over, tends to keep going.
Yeah.
Kind of along that line, and a thank you would be people that volunteered to clean up along the shore and, and the river. I think that happened, what, the weekend of the Arts and Crest Fair, I believe, is that Sunday or Saturday?
Was it that Saturday weekend before? I remember, yeah, talking to John about it, yeah, he's obviously leads, help leads that effort, and whichever date it was here nor there, but they did have another...
River cleanup.
Successful, I guess, I guess, how you look at it, outing on that front, and there was plenty of debris, once again, collected and trash.
Thanks for that.
Is that it, Mary?
Yep.
Hey, John?
Um, just, I, just to note that the house at one forty-one Fifth Avenue's got knocked down, so I'm sure that the neighbors are very happy that another eyesore is gone from town. Just in, just to note, as Stephen talked about being proactive on Emerald Ashboro, and it's in Clear Lake, Wright County now, so I don't think it'll be twenty years before it gets here. I think we're, be lucky if we get by for five years, so I think we might wanna consider spending a little bit more money on that front. That's it.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Well, Mary noted a couple of my items, but just with the fall cleanup, it is this Saturday, it is for single-family residential, 'cause I know sometimes we have apartment complexes that, that stuff, or maybe even businesses, but they don't contract with, through the city most of those, so it's if you're contracting through the, for garbage pickup, that's who's all, and then Creekside's open house is this Thursday, so in two days from four to seven P.M. So encourage the public, if you wanna go out there and see what Creekside does, the opportunity is this Thursday, four to seven. That's it.
Thanks, Matt.
Airport Commission, Dave Scar is up, his term is up, and he said that he would serve again, so I will appoint him to the Airport Commission. If somebody has any objections. All righty, besides that, fall weather, we're talking, maybe we get frost on Friday night, so the time has come, so, and, so the leaves will be falling, Kent, huh?
The best time of the year.
Yes. With that, all I have, so adjournments in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Chad, second by John to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.